David Carson. In attendance are council members Fields, Forsyth, Kahn, Kritzer, and Stewart. Fields, Stewart, and Kahn are online, and the rest of us are in the chambers. We have, I think, six items on our agenda, five or six. Five items, and the first is a recap of our 2023 recreation summer.
Yes, good afternoon. This is Director Hamilton with the Parks Department, and I am joined today by Amanda Demel, our Recreation Manager, and Gillian Lowe, one of our Recreation Coordinators, and they will be handling this update.
All right, good afternoon, Council. I'm Amanda Demel, the Recreation Manager in the Parks and Rec Department. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here today. We're here today to present a summer recap, and I would like to introduce my colleague or invite my colleague to introduce themselves, excuse me.
Hello, I am Gillian Lowe, Recreation Program Coordinator.
Right. In your agenda packet, there are slides if you'd like to follow along with the information. Today, we're going to share with you a recap of summer programs and summer camps, including statistics and section highlights, and then we'll have time at the end for any questions that you have. So first, looking at some participation numbers and statistics on Slide 3. Overall, we're very pleased with this past summer in regards to our participation statistics, our financial data, and overall performance. We hosted a total of 397 camps facilitated by 25 providers. Eight of these were new camp offerings this summer, which included a new farm and garden camp, rocketry, coding, chess, jump rope, theater, and pickleball. Looking now to the numbers on your slide, again, offered a total of 397 total camps, and we served over 5,000 campers. We earned $1.3 million in total summer camp revenue, which was up over $440,000 from last summer. For all recreation activities, including camp and non-camp programs, we saw growth as well, with an increase both in both programs offered and total registrants. Revenue increased nearly half a million dollars as well. Lastly, this year, as part of a camp registration, we collected optional camper demographic information, including race and ethnicity, disability status, household income, and geographical neighborhood information. Nearly half of the families participated, which was around 2,000 to 2,500 responses. So the data was really interesting and enlightening to figure out who is and is not coming to our summer camps, and we'll be able to use this data to better serve our community moving forward. And I'm going to pass it to Gillian.
Thank you, Amanda. It was very busy and exciting this summer for recreation. I'm going to share with you a few highlights from each one of our sections. So in our youth and teen section, the Old Firehouse Teen Center's music program has been in full swing. They're hosting concerts and open-mic nights each month. The teen center also hosted the Battle of the Bands audition for Derby Days. The recording studio has been open to community members to record, mix, and master music and other audio, and the free teen dinners continued over the summer in partnership with Timberlake Church. Our summer camp offerings for youth this year included a variety of STEM, art, and other day camps that brought in over $712,000 in revenue over the 10 weeks. Art, pottery, and music classes were also offered over the summer. Also, a balance bike fundamental class for young kids was new this year. And we are very excited to welcome back Youth Eastside Services staff to the teen center this summer, where they provided free behavioral health services and programs for teens three days a week. In our adaptive section, summer programs included open sports programs at Hartman Park and a martial arts class in partnership with Enzo Center. Our inclusion services staff also supported numerous youth in summer camps all over Redmond. The Redmond Youth Partnership Advisory Committee continued to meet this summer and kept busy with a variety of service projects, including tech help and intergenerational gardening with seniors, park and trail cleanup projects, volunteering at city events like Derby Days and Rockin' on the River, and hosting a Parents Night Out event for kids. Our sports and fitness section oversaw a lot of summer camps, including Skyhawks, I-9 Sports, Seattle Ultimate, Washington Youth Rocketry, Tracker's Earth, tennis outreach programs, and TGA Golf and Pickleball. The adult sports leagues were offered, including softball, soccer, and volleyball, as well as a free agent sports program, drop-in for adults, including volleyball, pickleball, and women's basketball. And our field rental program created over 116 permits for rentals, and Fields were in use daily through camps, rentals, and open sports use. In our outdoor section, they served 335 children in their summer camps. They ran camps at Farrell McWhorter Farm Park and saw 68% revenue increase from 2022 by adding a farm and garden camp, which taught campers about homesteading, farm animal care, and forest stewardship. The parties in the farm program returned this year and saw 600% increase in revenue as it returns to its previous popularity prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. The outdoor section was also proud to continue their partnership with Nature Vision as a year-round contractor that offers nature and conservation education. And they were very excited to have Big Truck Day back this year for the first time since 2019. And in our senior section, the Rockin' on the River concert series was a big success with an estimated audience of over 1,800 for the three concerts. Thirty seniors had a blast at Camp Wigo at Farrell McWhorter Farm Park in June, and the outing included a nature hike, crafts, lunch, scavenger hunt, and sing-along. Eighty seniors also enjoyed Sundays and entertainment during the Ice Cream Social in July, and the senior programs continued to provide over 900 lunches each week to the senior community through their lunch program. So I'll turn it back over to Amanda.
Yeah, thanks, Gillian. So in closing, we're very proud of our summer programs, activities, and services that we were able to provide to our community, and we're eager and already starting to plan for summer 2024. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you so much for the update. And I'll just note that Councilmember Anderson has joined us, so we're at a full complement. And Council President Forsyth would like to ask a question.
Yay, thank you. Just wanted to hear from your perspective how the new fee structure is going for us and how we're doing on our equity lens as far as making sure that folks have access to all the programs.
And just to clarify, do you mean our new cost-of-service policy? Yeah. So I think the revenue tells a really good story. I think that is a major contribution to why our data is so strong, is because we are more in line with our cost-of-service policy. And I did pull a stat here that I wanted to share. We did a bigger push on trying to get folks into our Fee Assistance Program this summer, so we actually were able to award $144,000 and some change total, and we are actually going to be looking to bolster that program in the new year so we can maximize allocations for families, not only in the amount, but how many awards we can give. Because the RAF is so healthy, we'll be able to increase that amount to create more equity and accessibility. So that's one of the elements we're looking at.
Awesome, that's wonderful news, thanks.
Great, Council Vice President Kritzer.
Hello.
There you go.
Hello.
There you go.
There you go. One follow-up question on the revenue numbers. Great to see that we have greater participation and ultimately greater revenue. This is, this is revenue, not net revenue, right? So do you have a sense of, obviously, we had probably higher costs due to more participants. Did we see the net revenue go up?
We are still pulling those reports, but at the moment, I would say yes, and I could follow up with you on what that total is once we're done doing all of our payouts. So essentially, over the next month or so, we'll kind of process all of those invoices to our contractors that we've partnered with and get a better net revenue amount. And if I may, actually, I'd like to add one thing to the question you just asked. We also pulled data on, we served 31 individuals who had disabilities, and that was another area that we wanted to bolster as far as accessibility. So just thought of that after I hung up. So did that answer your question?
Yes, it did, and thanks so much for all your hard work. This is really cool and just, I mean, amazing to think that there were, you know, 5,000 kids served in summer camps and overall, over 11,600 residents who got to engage in all these activities. Like, that's, that's really amazing in terms of just the reach into our community. So thanks for the hard work.
Thank you. So, oh, Councilmember Fields has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carson. Just a quick follow-up. How does this, $400,000 more than last year is one benchmark. How does this go with your budget forecast? What did you expect, and what did, how does that compare to what you actually did?
Without it sitting in front of me, I'm pretty sure we increased and surpassed what we forecasted, which is a good problem to have. So what we'll do next is look at essentially the excess monies and see how we can help supplement. Like I said, we'll look at our Fee Assistance Program. Moving into the next budget cycle, we'll also work with Director Hamilton on what expenses we can move out of the general fund and be supported by the RAF and some other specialty projects. So a good problem to have. We exceeded it, and we do have some good plans on how we can use the surplus. So I could pull the exact numbers of what we forecasted and what the final net was.
So I'm, I'm, all problems are good, all problems are bad. I would like to know what that budget variance is when you got all your data together. So if you could do a follow-up and let me know, how does that compare to our budget today? That would be helpful.
Yeah, we can definitely share those numbers, Councilmember Fields. And then I would just like to add to what Amanda just shared as well, is that due to the new cost recovery policy that Council President Forsyth was alluding to as well, has created a different health within our RAF. And so we do also have additional costs that are coming up for the community center, and it's really shifting how we do our work, including things like fee assistance. So we'll definitely share those numbers, but I also would anticipate that as we approach the next budget cycle, you'll just kind of see a different picture of the RAF. We're doing some different restructuring within it just due to our new cost-of-service policy, the new facility coming online. And like you said, there's always new challenges and problems that come up, and we're going to address those in the new budget cycle as well.
Right, no, and I appreciate that. And I'm not trying to do 24/25 budgeting today. I'm really just interested in how, how we exceeded our forecast, how much, and I'm interested in what that means. So appreciate that.
Absolutely, we'll definitely follow up with those numbers. Thanks, Councilmember.
Great, thank you. Well, it looks like, so I just wanted to chime in, and one of the things that, in the last couple of years, the pandemic notwithstanding, is that it's been difficult, so I've heard from multiple parents about, and one that has twins, that sometimes it's difficult to get them because they don't like necessarily the same things, even though they're twins, to get them into, into camps because the demand has been so high and we only have so many spots. So I'm glad to see that we're serving more campers and that we're adding new kind of interesting things that maybe, you know, we didn't have in our repertoire before. So I'm, I'm excited about, I'm really happy about this update and what it means for the community. So thank you for that. And if there are no other questions, we'll move on to our second item on the agenda, which is the approval of a consultant agreement with MING Analysis in the amount of $330,369 for the facilities condition assessment. And I think we have a new cast of characters.
Yes. So this is another Parks item. Joining me today is Quinn Kuhnhausen, our Facilities Manager, and Jenny Liebeck, our Environmental Sustainability Manager. So I'm going to hand it off to them to present this item.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Councilmembers. I'm Quinn Kuhnhausen, the Facilities Manager, and with me is Jenny Liebeck, the Sustainability Manager. And we're here today seeking your approval of the consultant agreement with MING in the amount of $330,369. This consultant will provide an updated condition, facilities condition assessment, which will include an environmental component. It's been 10 years since our last assessment. This condition assessment will establish a new baseline of our current condition of our facilities and their systems. This report will help inform repair and maintenance priorities for future budgets and allow us to look for energy efficiency opportunities. The project is scheduled to begin in November, will take approximately three months, and final council approval for this consultant is scheduled for the council meeting on 10/3. Jenny, do you have anything to add on the sustainability piece?
I just want to note, too, that this is a key part of council's climate emergency declaration, so how do we look to decarbonize city facilities? So this plan will help us do that and really operationalize it. So I really appreciate Parks and Quinn's collaboration and all this because we couldn't obviously do it without them, so.
So any questions?
Very good, any questions from Council? Councilmember Forsyth.
Thank you. Will this cover all city facilities, all buildings? And how many is that?
Yeah, it'll cover all facilities with the exception of the MOC. Since we're doing the MOC master plan, we decided to pull that from the scope of this job. And we did include RCC MV because that facility has been a bit of a challenge since we've been leasing that space. And so knowing what's there and what the future looks like there, I think that we wanted to include that facility. And City Hall, of course, has included the fire stations and a public safety building in our teen center as well.
Great, so roughly, how many buildings or how many buildings is that?
I think about 20, 18 or 20. Once we pulled out the MOC, it changed my number on that, but yeah, I think, yeah, I think maybe right around 15, I think, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Great, Councilmember Kritzer.
Thank you, and looking forward to having this done and getting to see the results to be able to make our city more sustainable. One thing that has come up as part of some of the research that I flagged for the rest of council around the effects of artificial light at night on salmon and other, well, mostly salmon in our, in our area, is that I just watched a presentation of research that was done on Lake Sammamish, and one of the things that they found was that the impacts of light were not only from right around the lake, but also from the sky glow and light that's created by buildings in our neighboring cities. They also, they study both Lake Sammamish as well as Lake Washington in this study. And one of the big things they saw were like municipal buildings. So anyway, just wanted to highlight that as part of, if we're thinking about the sustainability of our buildings, being able to look at potentially, you know, what the, the lighting is for any of these buildings, you know, if there's a, I think that's probably part of the energy efficiency as well, but also just thinking about what it might take to be able to make sure that we're aligning to dark sky international standards for our buildings so that our buildings are not contributing towards the sky glow that is, makes it difficult for some of our salmon to be able to survive. So just wanted to add that as an extra thing to think about as we begin doing this. I'm not sure if it was on your radar. I'm happy to send along the information from that report that just came out to our Salmon Recovery Council.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yes, thank you. Can someone from staff send to council a, maybe a 10-point summary of how the scope of work for this consultant will in fact address some of our climate emergency goals? Something to, to show that, that the actual scope is being directed towards that ends?
Absolutely. I can email that to council within the next week.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Fields. So, and I had, along the lines of what Councilmember Kritzer was talking about, was that City Hall seems to have not been constructed with exactly the best lighting, optimal lighting at, like, turning off everything but essential lighting, which I know, I'm channeling Councilmember Myers from about 10 years ago, and it's not gotten any better, it seems, because you'll, and the cleaning crew, notwithstanding, obviously, they turned them on, but sometimes, and I know that some of our, some of our conference room buildings or rooms do not go off unless you, like, turn them off. So it seems that we have certainly a little bit of things that we can do and, and potentially, I don't know if it's programming or if it's, you know, if it's going to take something more than that, but I do know that this building is substantially better lit than it needs to be at 2:00 in the morning. So anyway, not that I'm out that much at 2:00 in the morning, but I've seen it.
Thanks for that. I can speak to it a little bit. I'm working with CB Richard Ellis right now on upgrade lighting controls. The current lighting controls are no longer supported, so they're, you know, so you're, you're right, you're spot on. And so they've put forth a bid for me to review and get back to them about updating the lighting controls in this facility.
Got it, okay. That'd be interesting to see, okay. Thank you. Anything else for this item? So let's see, in terms of actions, sorry, I need to put these back on.
We'd like it on consent on October 3rd.
Okay, October 3rd. Any issues with it going on consent for October 3rd? Councilmember Forsyth.
I'm just interested in seeing the document that Councilmember Fields asked for, but otherwise, I'm good.
Sure, okay. Yeah, no, no issues with.
Yeah, I can try and get it to you earlier since obviously 10/3 is right around the corner, so I'll try and prioritize that.
Okay, terrific, thank you. All right, so it looks like we're set for 10/3 on consent. Thank you very much for the update. Okay, on to item number three on our agenda is the Southeast Redmond Neighborhood Park Master Plan Update.
I am going to be joined on this item by our Parks Planning Manager, Caroline Chapman, and she's here to just share a brief update on our master planning process for the Southeast Redmond Park.
Yes, thank you, Lorraine. So as a quick refresher, this park space is just over three acres in the Southeast Redmond neighborhood. On two sides, it is surrounded by commercial land uses and another two sides on residential land uses, but that whole neighborhood has really grown substantially in recent years. So I wanted to go over the process of our master plan development and where we are and how we're going to be engaging the community. But we've brought on Burger Partnership to help us with this, and they are reviewing current site conditions and analysis of how this neighborhood park could really fit in with our broader park system. We're also including really robust community outreach, which includes two community meetings and some online questionnaires. The full outreach plan was in your packet, but it's already being implemented, and we had an event at the park or the park site on September 13th with over 150 attendees to that meeting to really share their ideas and learn more about the process. But beyond getting community feedback around those amenities and potential design, we also really wanted to set expectations with the community on what is typical in a neighborhood park and what we don't always include. We don't always have restrooms or rentable picnic shelters, so stating that from the outset around what they can expect, and that our neighborhood parks are really meant to serve those surrounding residences and businesses. So the initial feedback that we got at that community meeting and from the online questionnaire showed that we had a lot of support for flexible, all ages spaces with, interestingly, an emphasis from the community around teens and adults, that they thought that would be very important to this neighborhood. And there seems to be some coalescing support around the need for shade and covered areas, as well as a desire for natural open space and multi-use sports courts. There were a few initial community concerns around parking and noise, and so our consultant will be sure to address that and do any mitigation in the design that comes up for that. And they're going to take that feedback and the current conditions assessment, and Burger will create three concepts of the direction this neighborhood park could go. We've asked them to really center inclusive and sustainable design in the development of those concepts to fit in with the goals of the park plan and our citywide initiatives. We'll bring those concepts back to the public at a community meeting on October 18th at the RCC MV, and Parks and Recreation, or Parks Trails and Recreation Commission and Council will also have an opportunity to give feedback on those concepts, which will then be refined into one master plan. It's our hope to have the master plan completed in early 2024 so we can apply for grant funding from RCO and King County and build momentum towards the design and development of this neighborhood park. So happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions on the park? I heard the outreach was, was pretty, pretty amazing, how basically the whole neighborhood turned out, sound like.
That's great, yeah.
Councilmember Forsyth.
Thank you. How will the proximity to the gravel construction area be taken into account for the development of this park and the environmental impacts and health impacts?
Yeah, that's something that Burger is aware of and will be coming forward with recommendations. There might be some sound mitigation, or we know that there is a high water table in that area, so there might be some onsite water treatment and things like that, but, yeah.
Thanks.
Councilmember Forsyth, I mean, sorry, Kritzer.
You said October 18th, what's the, the time for that? I would, wanted to join the last one, but I only heard the day before, so then I wasn't able to make it, but I would really love to join the next one.
5:30.
5:30, okay, great.
Yes.
At the RCC.
MV, yeah. We should be in the lecture hall there, but.
Cool, if you could send that, that info, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, terrific. So I was curious about, so the neighborhood that is directly south and somewhat east of there, obviously an established neighborhood, Woodbridge. But I'm, I'm actually concerned about the folks that live in the area but aren't necessarily walking distance. We've got some apartments that are near the fire station and, oh, I forget what street it's on, 185th, I think it is. So there's, which don't really have a park that's in walking distance of them. So I am concerned that we, we need to make sure we have sufficient parking, but that, I mean, I don't want to take too much away from the, the amount of property that we have to actually use for the park. So there's a kind of a, a nice balance between, which I'm, I'm thinking maybe diagonal parking or something that, you know, really gives you more capacity but doesn't take up, you know, maybe only four, four, five, six feet more to, to do it. And that way, we get kind of the, the best bang for the buck there. And, and, you know, most people are going to be walking to it from the neighborhood that is potentially, you know, adjacent there, but the ones I'm, I'm not really concerned about them getting to the park, I'm more concerned about the, and there, there are some that are, you know, probably half, half a mile away in the very south end of that development, so it's not necessarily, you know, likely that everybody from the neighborhood is going to walk, but, but I'm more worried about the other ones that we have. There's a couple of large developments, apartment developments nearby, so.
Yeah, I just want to share, I think that's a really great point, that one of the reasons we picked Burger as we went through our RFPs is that they were one of the only consultants who brought forward the discussion around how people access this park. Because of its location and it's off such a busy street, they brought forward the considerations around safety, pedestrian safety along that corridor, and people who are going to want to access it, who, they may actually be walking distance, and yet, it's not walkable. And so that may not be something that we're able to address all in one go, but that is something that they are planning to incorporate in the master plan and was one of the reasons we selected them is because of that consideration that you just brought up. They just kind of had a really great, even preliminary conversation with us around that, and that was a, they were, I think, the only consultant that brought that forward. So it's definitely on their radar, which I appreciate very much.
Yeah, exactly, because, yeah, that, that street is not exactly the best street to, to be crossing with little kids and stuff, so, great, I'm very glad to hear that. Anything else on this particular topic? Go back to the agenda. So this is just informational, so we, when, when were we likely to hear kind of the results of the outreach?
Yeah, I will bring it back to council in mid-October, and then the final master plan, I believe, is on for end of January.
Okay.
To bring that back.
Very good. So that, so, so you're going to have another outreach session, and then that'll be summarized? Okay, very good, all right, well, thank you. One, one last thing from Councilmember Forsyth.
Yeah, so it says it's coming back to us on the 10/17 business meeting for us to provide direction, but the outreach meeting is the 18th, so how will we hear the incorporated?
We have to make some changes. There are a few scheduling conflicts. We have to make some changes. There are a few scheduling conflicts that we clearly didn't finish working through.
No problem. Just wanted to clarify.
And we won't be looking for direction at that mid-October meeting. There's nothing to direct quite yet, so it'll be for information only. It's just the end of the year is getting quite full, so it'll likely come as a staff report.
Great. Thank you very much. That is, looks like the end of that topic, so we will move on to item number four, which is acceptance of the Department of Commerce Solar Plus Energy Storage Grant in the amount of $100,000. And Jenny Leibach is back with us.
Great. Um, yes, so the city has been conditionally awarded a $100,000 grant from the Department of Commerce. So the grant would fund a feasibility study evaluating five city facilities for solar and battery storage opportunities. And so I'm just requesting council's approval to add this item to the consent agenda on the October 3rd business meeting, pending receipt of the final grant agreement from the Department of Commerce.
Great. Any questions on this? Councilmember Forsyth.
I thought I saw in the packet that it was signed already. Is it not signed?
That's just a, a letter that they were, that we had to sign saying that we were still in. That is not our grant agreement. Yeah, that's just a letter of commitment.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yes.
So the, I, I had a question. Oh, someone has. Oh, sorry, but I see another, oh, yeah. Councilmember Stewart, go ahead.
Thank you so much, and thanks for clarifying. I was a bit confused in the memo if this was dollars toward the future development of a feasibility study, but I believe you've stated that this is in fact the feasibility study, so thank you for that. Could you talk to us about which five facilities are going to be evaluated?
Yes. Let me pull those up really quick. It's a City Hall, our Public Safety Building, our new community center. We did include a, a note about our MOC. Obviously, that isn't a kind of master planning phase, so that's a tricky one that we're trying to kind of thread that needle. And then it was a fire station, which is our current EOC, our Annex EOC. 17 would be the other facility.
I see. Thank you. And with the MOC, I, I understand that that is in its, in its other process, and it's also a very natural facility for something like this to take place in the future. So hopefully that those conversations are intertwined, and that is all on the table for consideration. Thanks so much.
Councilmember Fields, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm trying to, my, uh, MOC and the state of where we're at with MOC, it seems like the most. I appreciate that. There's some discovery left, yet to go. But a quick question. When we're doing a feasibility study, what, and I'm, I'm a little bit not in clear understanding. It's, is it either/or, or a combination of solar and stor? Is it a combination of those things, or is it, might be a solar building, or it might be battery, or energy storage building?
Councilmember Fields, you're cutting out just, or quite a bit. I think your question is, is it a solar and/or storage feasibility study?
Yes.
So this is specifically a solar and a storage, so we're looking at them both together. It's, it's resilience lens, right? So that's why we're looking at some of our critical facilities as well, so we can continue to operate, you know, given power outages and things like that.
Got it. All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I, I had a question. Is, so will we, will we be hiring a consultant to do this work then? Is that?
Yes, yeah.
And, and when were we likely to put that out for, I assume it's going to go out for bid and?
So it's actually our intent that we'll be, we will wrap it into the facility condition assessment as well, so I'll be coming back to you once we get this grant agreement approved with a contract amendment, so that they can do that work as well. This, the grant has a pretty tight timeline.
Okay.
It's basically, they would like us to spend all of the funds by June, and so we're just looking at ways we can really rapidly keep that work moving.
So I'm, I'm just curious how that works with kind of open bidding, given that nobody else would have known that that was part of the, or was it? Was it a, a potential in the?
So it's actually part of the scope. So what this is allowing, yeah, the current, the, the RFP that, that Quinn issued included solar and energy storage evaluation. This feasibility study allows us to do a deeper analysis of the, of that, so where before we would have had to have done a kind of high-level cursory review, this allows us to do, get some really good numbers for that.
Okay. All right. Very interesting. Okay, I think, I don't see any other questions. And so we're talking about this being on consent, I assume?
Yes, for October 3rd.
October 3rd as well, okay. So any, any problems with this going on consent for October 3rd? Seeing none, I think you have the direction. Great, thank you so much. All right, and back to the agenda for item number five, which is September 2023 Environmental Sustainability Action Plan Update and Leaf Blower Questionnaire Over, Questionnaire Overview. Easy for me to say.
Yes. Great. So again, this is just our monthly ESAP update. So I only want to highlight one topic before we dive into the leaf blower content. But just that the city, we did develop a climate resilience and sustainability element for our comprehensive plan, so this is a new element in support of House Bill 1181, which passed in the last legislative session. And while we don't have to comply until 2029, we are, again, proactively complying, you know, per council's direction in the past. So that is open for public comment, so just would encourage council to help, you know, spread the word and to make sure that we can get good feedback on those policies. But what I did want to spend most of our time today is just reviewing the results from the leaf blower questionnaire. So just as a reminder, in quarter, Q1 of this year, council directed staff to review or explore opportunities for some sort of leaf blower program policy, just as we look to, for opportunities to address gas-powered leaf blowers. So our first step in this was to issue a questionnaire just to solicit public feedback on leaf blower policies and understand kind of where the community stood on some of this work. So we, the questionnaire was open for two months. This was from April through June, and we promoted that online via our city's social media channels, our e-news, and then so the city's sustainability, or, yeah, the city's sustainability e-newsletter as well. And we did then targeted outreach as well to the 165 landscaping businesses that are registered to work in Redmond. So the, the results from that questionnaire, so we received 242 responses, which I've been told is a pretty great response rate for some of, for our work. And some of the highlights from that, from that work include the fact that, like, one of the pieces that was quite surprising for me is just, the primary driver for this was many of community members cited noise and the smell as some of the top drivers for wanting to move a policy forward. There was generally large support for a policy with about 69% of respondents noting that they would support a policy, specifically looking towards electric leaf blowers. Some of the barriers that were cited included short battery life, high purchase cost, and just lower concern about lower equipment performance or durability. And so I would encourage council to, to look through some of the written feedback, so I did include that in the attachments, because we did have kind of an open section of, you know, please tell us any other thoughts, and there was some really great insight that was included there as well. But some of the themes from that section just included concerns that, you know, professional electric leaf blower technology is just not sufficient right now for commercial uses. But also some concerns around putting more stress on small businesses within the city without a very thoughtful approach in how a policy might be rolled out. And then just, again, a strong desire for quieter alternatives. I did appreciate some of the, some of the comments about use of rakes, a little humor that was sprinkled in there, which I appreciated. And then there was some question as to whether this should be a priority for the city as well. So again, that full report is attached, or the responses from that questionnaire are included in exhibit one for, for the council to review. But again, the intent for today was really just to look through that. We did also bring the results to our Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee, and we also asked them to look and help us prioritize, because we do have a lot of priorities right now and, and things we're trying to move forward. And just ask, hey, where does a leaf blower initiative kind of fit within the prioritization from our committee's perspective? And so I did include those results in the, the attachment as well. And so there is no action for council today. Again, the intent is just to bring those questionnaire results to you. Our plan then is for next month to bring some of our staff, as you, I think some of you know, we have some, you know, great leaders in our Parks and Public Works teams who are already integrating electric equipment into their operations. And so we just want to hear from them, because obviously they fall into that professional leaf blower users as well, so we just want to hear firsthand from them, and then we can discuss some next steps from there. So I do, that's just what I was hoping to cover today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions about leaf blowers and policy going forward? Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much, Ms. Leibach. This is probably one of the top couple of issues that the city council hears about, and so to be seeing these results is just, it, it's important that we take the time to analyze them as well as to acknowledge, I think, for the listening public, that we hear you and we are spending time in our limited resources to investigate this for the community. One thing, Ms. Leibach, if we are going to continue the conversation in the coming months, one thing that would be helpful for me in evaluating this information is I was a bit looking for, you know, there were 17 professionals identified in the survey respondents. And, and basically the remainder being neighbors and residents and residential users. And I would kind of like to see that those two groups, the data for those two groups separately, so that we can give the full due to the small businesses and that we could give the full due to the residents. If I missed that in the packet, I do apologize, but I, I do think that that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a, a great flag, and I'm happy to pull that together.
Thanks so much.
Very good. Councilmember Fields.
Thank you, Councilmember Carson. This is not a question about leaf blowers. And it's a bit maybe off, off, out of left field, so to speak. We are going to be talking about the environmental impact study for the 2050 plan soon. Is the scope under your office, does it include an analysis or an assessment, an independent assessment from the planning department or the rest of the city governance, governance, on something as important as that? Will you be providing us, say, at the next monthly meeting, the strengths and maybe the weaknesses of the EIS?
No, that, that has not been, so I'm definitely involved in the EIS and work closely with the long-range planning team, and I, I was not going to provide you with any SWAT analysis of that.
Okay. My guess was that you wouldn't be. My thought is that maybe sometime in the future, your office should, though. I appreciate your response.
And I will just say, the intent is that we're working together, you know, internally, and so whatever's presented to council, you know, represents all of our internal stakeholder feedback and, and input. So you can assume that things that come forward should have that stamp.
So we're all working together, even council, and I appreciate that. And sometimes things get lost in the detail, so it's just an opinion of mine. I'm not saying that we don't work together. Council and me as a council member consistently and constantly try to do the very best I can to work with people, but I also provide independent ideas. And I recognize that you are in the mayor's office, and maybe that's not the way it's set up, so I understand that, appreciate your answer, and, but it has nothing to do with not working together.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Critter.
Returning to the leaf blowers, I had a, well, I guess a thought on this. I do, I really appreciate you going to the, the committee and getting their thoughts. I would say, as we kind of think about how we prioritize this work, what also would be helpful, though, is to understand how different things scale in terms of the work required from staff. Because like, talking about supporting our whole clean buildings program or our community EV roadmap, is that the exact same scale in terms of how much effort it might require to do a, a leaf blower initiative? And also in terms of a leaf, potential policy options, like there's various things we could do. One might be just starting with, you know, cleaning up our own act in terms of our own city's use of leaf blowers versus what we do ask residents to do or, or commercial companies. So I imagine it could be scaled as well. So I think the, my only issue when we ask these types of things is like, are we comparing apples to apples where it's like, if we do leaf blowers, can we not have green buildings? Because if we propose that to our committees, they may say, buildings are the most big, important thing, but if we could do both, you know, that, that type of thing versus, what are the real trade-offs, I guess, is, is a little bit of my question.
Would you like me to provide that analysis later, or are you asking for a response now?
Well, I'd be interested in your thoughts on that now.
I mean, there's just, there's so much happening right now with all of the, you know, funding. I mean, the folks that I work with, they're probably tired of hearing me talk about all of the funding that's available and how we need to be, you know, preparing ourselves for that and things, things like that. So even the grant that we have right now, the solar storage feasibility study, was an on-my-work-plan-for-the-year, and that's a new thing, while it's still being something that we're able to weave in, it's still a more work for, you know, a staff, me, to manage. So I just, I realize to your point that those aren't necessarily an apples-to-apples comparison, but like, those are the things on my work plan for '24, and it's just, at some point, I have to start prioritizing and being honest about what actually can get done, because ultimately then I won't deliver a great product to you, right? Or, you know, work with staff so we can deliver the best product to you. So it's just trying to be really thoughtful and mindful about that, so.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that, and I will say that I, I appreciate being, for us all to be mindful about the capacity for staff to take on anything new. And I think what I would ask as we move forward in this conversation is to just understand where it might get slated in if we wanted to work on it, or are there different levels? And I think we've brought this up with other types of asks that have come your way, is, you know, are there ways in which, for example, we might be able to take some sort of action at the council level that wouldn't require a huge lift on, you know, what's huge lift, what's smaller lift? Are there any steps we might take that wouldn't take up a huge amount of additional staff capacity? Or what might be the trade-offs that we would look at if we wanted to prioritize something like this? That are the trade-offs, rather than comparing a really big program to a, a smaller initiative, to compare what is another smaller thing that would be about equal amount of time or something like that? Because I think we should go into that eyes-open and decide what is, what do we want staff to be able to spend time on and, and respect your time. So I really am respectful of that and appreciative of, of this work so far. Other question that I think would be interesting going forward is just, I liked in the materials how you shared about other jurisdictions' leaf blower policies and just being able to kind of think of, I'd be just interested to know from the staff's perspective, what's probably the best fit for Redmond for us to really consider in terms of options. Thanks.
Great. Councilmember Forsyth.
Thank you. So I'm just going to give my, my thoughts on the policy options that were laid out in front of us, or at least comparisons for other cities. I know I've said this before, I'm a fan of what Kirkland has done. I know that they have a tiered approach, and they also have money dedicated for small businesses that would need to make that switch. I think that is probably a really good fit for us as a community and something that we would want to put our money where our mouth is to make sure that we're not singling out small businesses, making sure we're still supporting them, and then we're all coming along together to achieve this goal. So that one to me, I mean, as, as much as I know about it, that one to me seems the best option for our community as well. And I'd be interested to know how far out staff, staffing thinks that we can actually implement something like what Kirkland has done if all of those elements would work for us as well. for us as well. You don't have to answer that now.
Great, thank you. So I had one pondering that I wanted to pose, which is, so, you know, we talk about the, and obviously, I mean, I have a service, and so I have to close the windows when they're, when they're blowing the leaves and stuff, so, because it really is, is not ideal to breathe in, so. But I also, I'd like to know if there have been any kind of studies on, so, the environmental damage that you're doing with leaf blowers that are electric, I mean, there's still, you're still putting some debris in the air, you're still, you've got the batteries to contend with, you've got the electricity that's generated to power those batteries. So do you know if there's kind of an apples-to-apples comparison, despite them not being both apples, that, you know, the council could look at in terms of a fair analysis of, you know, what do you really gain by making a policy in this area? Because I'm, I just, I don't know the answer. I couldn't even hazard a guess what, what the differences are, but it seems to me like someone's probably done the analysis, and it would be nice to make some decisions based on actual data. So, I mean, to the extent, as we're moving down this, and again, you know, I don't love the noise, I don't love the, especially the, I think some are even, you know, two-cycle engines still that throw a lot of oil in the air, two-cycle engine oil. But they are efficient at doing what they do. The question is, you know, efficiency at what cost, and what is the trade-off for battery-powered leaf blowers or rakes? We, yeah, you know, computers used to be called books, you know, or Kindles used to be called books. So that would be great to know what resources you could point us to, if there are any, on that score as we kind of move down this path. Okay, if that's, if there are no other, no other questions, thank you for the update, and we will, we will hear more, continue the conversation. Great, thank you very much. Well, that does bring us to the end of our agenda. Is there anything for the good of the order? Seeing nothing, we are adjourned.